Yes.
On the meeting to order, report attendance. I think we have Deirdre, Brett, and Scott excused. We have a quorum, so I'll call the Planning Commission together. Chris Nordike subbing in as chair for Scott Rishi. Let's move on to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any minutes because we had a meeting last week, so I suspect we'll get two sets of minutes at the next meeting. So moving on to Article Three, your motion to approve the current agenda. Moved by Mr. Oxley, supported by Mr. Rappin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Will approve the current agenda. Article Four, does any member have a conflict of interest with Article Six or any other conflicts of interest that at this time they wish to disclose? Okay, Article Five, I will acknowledge any visitors who are wishing to speak. And as we don't have a public hearing in Article Six, it can be on anything. I would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes per speaker and identify your name and address. So at this time, if you'd like to speak, come forward. Okay. Move on to Article Six, case number twenty-one, three, six, two, nine, Bob Morse. I guess we do have a public hearing, my apologies. Bear with me, this is my first one.
Plans out here.
As someone new to the commission, does this preliminary plan approval mean this will be coming back to us yet again?
It will, not the site plan, but after this step, we'll draft the PUD ordinance itself.
And the ordinance will come.
And the ordinance will come back and do a final recommendation to the township board.
That's all I wanted to know. Okay.
Great.
I think this would be the only public hearing, though.
Yeah.
So.
With us, the township board will have a final one, but correct. Yeah. So the applicant is requesting preliminary plan review to amend the existing PUD to allow for the construction of a new car wash and drive-through coffee shop. We last saw this application at our June seven meeting for a basic plan review. And did that mean there was a recommendation of the applicant to move forward with their basic Plan A, which included the car wash and coffee shop on one parcel, which is what you're seeing here. So the applicant submitted the additional information required after the basic plan review, so a public hearing was scheduled for a meeting tonight. As we saw at the last one, the applicant's proposing an approximately 5,240 square foot car wash and a 550 square foot coffee shop with thirty-two parking spaces, and that's including the vacuum spaces there. As noted at the previous meeting, our zoning ordinance allows for one building with a primary use on a parcel, so adding the coffee shop here would be an exception to that, on which the PUD could accommodate. There are twelve vacuums shown on the plan there, two of which they're asking for exceptions for, since they're within the fifty-foot required setbacks. So those two vacuums on the west side are within that, as they've noted on the plan. The setbacks from Twenty-Eighth Street for the two buildings are similar or smaller than the one hundred feet that we require in the B two, but they are in line with the other buildings in the PUD, so that's not unusual there. The plan does include cross-access to the parcels to the east, as we've requested, and you've seen the northeast corner there. And we are asking for cross-access easement to be recorded for that access. That access is coming from the curb cut from Twenty-Eighth Street, which is being realigned with a curb cut across the street. Road Commission staff have reviewed that preliminarily. Review that curb consti- kind of given their preliminary approval of it. And then the applicant will also need to apply with any additional comments coming from the road commission. The plan does show a retaining wall along the south property line down here by the bay of parking there with a maximum height of six and a half feet, and I do indicate that it will have a railing on top of that. The applicant's be in a process of vacating the right-of-way, so that was the portion in between the two pre-existing parcels there. And then combining all of the parcels, and so that vacation and combination will have to be finalized as they move along here. The signed plans for both the buildings are included in your packet there. Currently, both plans there, both buildings are showing signs that exceeds the allowed one hundred square feet. So revised sign plans will need to be submitted. Both the fire department and township engineer have reviewed and approved the plans. The applicant will need to receive a number of permits before beginning construction, such as soil erosion. And then they will need to submit a stormwater maintenance agreement to the township. One of the requirements you gave the applicant at the last meeting was to provide an agreement to remove the coffee shop building after a certain amount of time if it becomes vacant. The applicant has agreed to remove the building if it is vacated for a period of eighteen months or longer. And then this requirement can be written into the PUD ordinance to codify that. The applicant stated there have been some ongoing discussions with the other members of the PUD, which if you call them, is the Macatawah Bank, regarding the kind of condo association that exists and maintenance of the shared areas there. The applicant will need to provide a maintenance plan or agreement for the shared private streets and access drives, and then that document will need to be recorded. Lastly, looking at the landscaping, the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five-foot buffer yard along the property lines. There are a few areas along the south property line where that buffer yard is less than twenty-five feet. However, what they are requesting is consistent with the other properties in the PUD. And they are providing an extensive landscaping plan as well. And as part of that, we're requesting that they provide a $20,000 landscape bond before beginning construction. So if you do provide preliminary plan approval, then staff will begin drafting the amendments to the PUD ordinance and then bring that back to you for a final recommendation to the township board. Staff are recommending approval of the preliminary plan with the eight conditions noted in the staff report. A number of these are some of the typical conditions that they need to be addressed before building permits can be issued. However, the applicant will need to submit revised signage plans and then also the maintenance agreement for the shared private streets and access drives before we bring this application back to you for that final recommendation to the township board. That's all I got.
Any questions, Brian? Remember.
Um, will they also be bringing back his stormwater maintenance agreement as well?
They will be. We haven't required that before the township approval in the past. It's usually something that we make sure we get in before any building permits are issued.
Some other recent projects have had difficulties with stormwater, but and I would just like to hear what, there is an underground system in this one.
That's correct.
I just want to understand better how that
Sure.
works.
Yeah, I'll probably let the applicant, I think their engineers here, they can speak a little bit more to that.
The connection to the property to the east, Saffapoor Properties, is that acceptable to that property owner?
I believe so. That property owner is here tonight, I saw, so I believe he may make a comment to that in the public hearing.
Just want to make sure.
Any other questions to staff?
Brian, have you heard from any of the neighbors to the south? With any feedback?
I have not. I know they've been in contact with the property to the south or southeast because they purchased that small little section from them, so they're at least aware of the plan. They haven't heard anything from them.
It's Brian. Should we hear from the applicant first or the public hearing first?
Advocate.
Thank you. The applicant is present, would like to speak.
Good evening. I'm Bob Morse and I have my land planner, Jim Morgan from RJM Designs and Doug Stolzenberg from Excel Engineering. So thank you for your time. Special thank you to Brian. He's spent a lot of time guiding us through this process, so we're really appreciative of that. So with that, what questions do you have for us?
Questions for the applicant, remember Oxley.
What's the grade difference between the property to the west and the property to the east?
A memory, I'm going to say it's about seven to eight feet.
Just helps with the minutes. If you're here, she won't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the east, the grade is about sixty-five, and on the west, it's about seventy-two. So, yeah, seven feet.
So that would make grading on the drives are a bit of a challenge to get the right slope in there.
Yeah, the driveway that we're going to rebuild to connect to the property to the east at that point at the Twenty-Eighth Street right away, the grade is seventy. So there's about five feet that we got to get down to meet the parking lot grade for the neighbor to the east.
Any other additional questions? Remember Merlin?
Tell me about the underground stormwater system.
Okay.
Go back to engineering one oh one.
It, the system is located right here partially in that open island area and partially under the pavement. There's a series of catch basins throughout the site that catch the water and deliver it via pipe to that underground system. I don't know if you've seen these installed before. I call them dog houses. They're a kind of a half-moon plastic structure, and they put them together like pinker toys. And basically, the system is designed to leach into the soil all the stormwater. And we had some soil borings and infiltration tests to prove that the soil was capable of accepting that water.
Is it largely sand?
It's sand, yes. Yep. And the system does have an overflow pipe with a connection to the catch basin in Twenty-Eighth Street that happens to fall within the new driveway. County Road Commission approved that connection, and that's
Emergency overflow.
That's strictly an emergency overflow.
Are there ways that sediment can get down into there?
We're going to put sumps in all the catch basins, number one. Number two, we're going to lay the connecting pipe system with a perforated pipe. So I think some of the water will get leached into the soil just traveling in the pipe. The underground system has the feature of a collection chamber that can be pumped out to remove any collection of sediment.
Any other follow-on questions, member Merlin or other?
And that driveway, the grade going down, you say about five feet drop? How many millennial feet are you going to use to do that from your property into the neighbors?
That's about I don't have a scale with me, but that's about sixty feet where the steepest part of the driveway.
Any other questions? Yeah.
It just came to me, so it's not probably the best question, but the the driveway between this parcel and the neighbors, the sixty feet you're talking about going down, what happens with all of the water, storm water that goes down there? Do they have adequate system down there to get rid of the storm water that goes to them?
Good, good question. Just before the property line, probably ten feet from the property line, these two circles right here, there's a set of catch basins. So the water that comes down that driveway will be caught in those two catch basins and brought back to the underground system. So the only water that should get to the neighbor is that last ten feet.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yes, just a comment to thank you for the iterative process and conversations here to get to this point. Appreciate it.
I would absolutely echo Mr. Rappin's comments. This has definitely been a collaborative effort, and I appreciate the flexibility that you all have shown willingness to work on the coffee house. Interestingly enough, two weeks ago, I was in Kansas City and saw a very similar layout for a Tommy's, and it looked really good, and it was well done. So, remember Merlin, do you have another comment or question?
Just a comment. I think I read that there is a guard rail on top of that retaining wall.
Yeah, I would hesitate to use the word guard rail, but there will be some type of railing there.
Right, so that people won't just by accident walk over it.
Correct.
And that was was that a requirement of our zoning ordinance on that case?
It was on the site plan when they submitted it.
Good common sense. Thank you for that.
I think that's, don't quote me, but it might be a building code. Yeah.
So it could be a fence. Doesn't have to be a guard rail per se.
Well, I didn't yet, and I used the wrong term. I just, some sort of barrier so that someone doesn't accidentally take one too many steps.
At first, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey. Thanks. We've got a public hearing, your motion. Public hearing, member Merlin, your support?
Support.
Oxley, all those in favor of going to public hearing?
Aye.
All those opposed? We've got a public hearing. Anybody who is, wished to speak on this, please step up and say your name, sit at the podium, name and address, please. Welcome.
Thank you.
My name is John Saffapoor. I represent Saffapoor Properties, the neighbor to the east of the project at six four four, for Twenty-Eighth Street. I want to thank the commission as well as Bob and his colleagues for putting together an impressive program or plan in general. I'm particularly excited about the beautification. I think it'll be a credit to the entire area, as well as my property, vested interest. My only comment was a request, my background's of public health, so public safety is always the first of my thought, my thoughts. And I remember speaking with the people at the bank a couple times, where there was always a concern about the lack of an easement access to the driveway. This provides, the recommendation state, they want to record a cross-access easement to parcel. I want to request that you make that a condition, that recommendation be a condition for going forward. That's the plan. I'm just, again, taking an extra measure of caution to ensure that it's a condition versus simply a recommendation, given that there had been some accidents in the past over there, speaking with the bank manager, as well as knowing the tenants over the past couple decades, where given proximity, again, it's people without an easement, people get irritated, there's road rage, they try to dart across the street in unfortunate ways, as well as it doesn't allow for access. We have a medical office there as well, for example. So in case, let's say there's a bottleneck during rush hour, it's difficult for ambulance to get in without ease of right of access, should it get closed off for any reason.
Just want to clarify something. You're talking about the bank to the east, because there is a bank to the west.
Right, right, Bank of America. Bank of America, correct.
You're talking about the ones to the east, the medical facility coming from the east.
Correct, yes. And so again, that
Through from
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know there's one right next door, and I started thinking that's what you were talking.
No, no, this is the one, the corner of Cascade and Thornhill, yeah, and Twenty-Eighth Street. So again, historically, there's been some issues. I was excited about new owners and the commission working with us to establish a more safe structure or process for access.
Thank you. Would the applicant come forward? A question I have, and would you be willing to make that a condition?
Certainly.
Okay. Bye.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public that wishes to come forward? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Lee, with Macatawah Bank, the bank to the west.
Okay, thank you.
We're generally supportive of the project. We appreciate and welcome new neighbor. We've been talking to them regarding cross-access easements and things like that. But I just wanted to be part of public record that we did kind of request that perhaps they reconsider this is much smaller than the big print, reconsider dumping all of their exiting traffic right across from our five lanes of drive-through traffic. We have three drive-through lanes, an ATM lane, and a workaround lane. And it's quite wide and with two lanes of traffic coming in, exiting directly opposite. We're just worried about a little bit of congestion there, so I took a liberty of redesigning their plan and suggesting that perhaps we think about dumping that traffic out here where they've got a clear left and right view, where my customers have a clear left and right view, as opposed to the confusion of who's across who and who goes first. And other than that, like I said, we're in support of the project and just like to give that little piece some additional consideration. And like I said, we welcome a new neighbor.
Is that where?
I think, if you could pull that back, I could ask staff, I thought that there was
I thought that that's their plan was to dump their traffic into that right-left exit.
This plan shows it exiting here, which is across from our, watching my fingers, across from our exit there. This is a dumpster area there. So if I can replace this and pull it back real quick, so you can see the difference.
In an earlier rendition of this, it did have a
It did have, yeah, I think there was a reason why it didn't. Brian, do you have a comment?
One of their first additions there on the bottom, very bottom right southeast corner, where there's an existing drive coming through. There was an existing drive to the south there, but with the other drives coming through, I think staff had kind of asked to keep that one across access to the south, but I think that property owner in the south too had some safety concerns with coming right directly into their parking lot. There's never been a driveway where the dumpster is now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else from the public that wishes to make comments? I think we have to motion out of public hearings. So, member Merlin, motions? I can, remember Oxley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, some quick discussion.
I just want to see there, in my mind, I'm still kind of lost about the Macatawah Bank. I thought the idea was you came in and went through the drive-through and came out the driveway, so I just want to see the general flow of traffic.
Yeah. If the applicant would step forward.
I'm just a little confused.
If you could identify yourself too for the minute.
Jim Morgan, RJM Design.
Thank you.
So this part right here is the exit. And vehicles can come out this way. They can actually go to the north and make their way out to Twenty-Eighth Street this way. They can head to the north and take this, which is also two lanes. And either go out this way or right through a, well, it's tricky. Make their way to the south and out this way, if they're heading to Thorn Hills. So there's a lot of ways out. This driveway here, by the vacuums, is primarily for the vacuums. So the amount of traffic coming out this way is quite a bit less.
But I think that that's the general concern, is that people are going to come out and go to those vacuums and then exit out that side, which in my mind, I was thinking, oh, you just go through the car wash and you go out to Twenty-Eighth Street. But now I can understand, I guess, that concern that if people do come through the car wash, they may take the right and then another right to get out.
One thing to consider too is, a lot of times, people vacuum the cars first, so they'll come in and vacuum them, go into the entrance there, so.
Right.
It's been our experience.
I'm a vacuum-first guy, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Will we have the applicant out?
Even if they were there after vacuuming, after they had their car washed, the how much? You had raised before a concern with too few vacuums so that these would be largely pretty full, but they would not be coming out all at the same time. So if someone wanted to exit just from the car wash this way, it would, it could be done, but it's not necessarily the easiest.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, we, kind of, if you look at the entrance off of Twenty-Eighth Street to the east, where the coffee shop is, that's going to be the quickest route into our car wash there, rather than going into the sheer drive with Macatawah Bank and then up and around. It'll be much quicker just to go in and out, and then when they exit, that'll be the quickest way to get back to Twenty-Eighth Street. And then another thought, too, when we looked at this, if you look at Macatawah's hours, I think it's ten or nine to five. So nine to five, and then nine to noon on Saturday. And then they're closed on Sunday. So, you know, if you look at our busy hours and Saturday afternoons and evenings and we, we believe that the amount of traffic that will be going through there, and we spend a lot of time looking at the Macatawah traffic coming out there too. And it wasn't significant. Our average vacuum user, by the time they pull in and get out, get the vacuum out, it's about five minutes. So if you look at twelve vacuums, and if they were full a hundred percent of the time, if you looked at the amount of traffic that would be coming out, it's not going to be significant, in our opinion, towards really going to affect, you know, that Macatawah traffic. So that's, that's kind of our, our opinion on that.
And if it became a problem, you could put a sign or something up there that sort of nudges people?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we mentioned that during our meeting too, maybe a temporary barricade that if, if there's a busy town put a temporary barricade out there to direct them, you know, elsewhere. We're happy to do that too.
Yeah, remember Oxley?
Technical question, just immediately north of the car wash on the entrance drive coming in, there's four rectangular things with circles in them. What are those? The sewer system by some chance?
Which plan are you looking at?
It's the grading plan.
When you just head up? There they are.
These, all these structures with circles, the circles are the designated silt sack and erosion control device. But inside the circle, there's a little square, that's the catch base, pick up the stormwater.
Okay.
But there are four boxes that are lightly shaded?
Ah, okay.
Is that what you were?
Yes, that's what I was looking at.
It's, it's part of the car wash system. It's, it's part of the car wash system. Yeah, it's, it's all underground, part of the very technical car wash system. I don't know exactly. Could be like the reclamation. They do a lot of recycling of water. And this is part of those chambers.
Okay, we call that buried costs.
Yeah, yeah, very much so.
Does that mean the next person getting their car washed is getting a wash with dirty water?
By the time that water comes out, it's a perfect pH.
Your tires, your tires are getting the dirtiest.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Excellent. Any discussion? I hear any motions?
I make a motion to approve with the conditions from staff.
Member Maxley makes a motion to approve. Do I hear support? Support, all those in favor? Hi. All those opposed? Passes. Thank you. Um, I'm going to mix this up because I want to do the rules of conduct last and start with other business.
Do that too.
Yeah, and you'll understand why in a moment. I reached out to Director Peterson, asked him to join us. So thank you for coming and to answer some questions as well as Manager Swayze. I asked that legal counsel was here for the rules of conduct. Thank you. And then I also asked Manager Swayze if he wanted to come and answer questions about a decision on a barrier or fence, whatever it is we're calling it. He had an engagement and could not attend, but he sent me a note and I want to put it in the record. Good afternoon, Chris. I hope the meeting goes well tonight and apologize unable to attend. I wanted to give you an update on the conversation regarding the potential barriers on the library property. I did approach Vanessa Walstra, Cascade Library Branch Manager regarding the concerns that were raised by the Planning Commission. And asked her if she would like our Buildings and Grounds Department to erect some temporary safety barriers for their activities. She declined, but said she would let me know if she needed them erected in the future. In addition, I have contacted the risk management team from our property and liability insurance carrier to do a walkthrough of our property. And to make recommendations from a risk management perspective. We will be looking at the property line where the round hill retaining wall is as well as the retention basin area. And any other areas of need concern that may be identified. I'll be happy to provide the planning commission with the follow-up report once the property walk is completed. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of.
That we've been.
I think he's hearing us and.
Well, he's hearing us. And hopefully he will get back to us. We should put it on that old business chart.
I appreciate your comments. Mike's, my dealings with Ben have been that he has every time I've asked him for something. So for what it's worth, but I, you know.
But we do have that, that Scott was talking about, that old business.
Yep.
Chart and the people I have talked with generally called Ben, the place where ideas go to die.
Yeah. Well, so we can put it there certainly. And I've talked with with Chairman Resi and he is going to follow up on the report. So, but any other questions on that? And if there's not, we can go to any other business. It's member Maxley.
The slope behind unit four is extremely steep. I would say it's about a forty-five degree angle. And if somebody goes over that edge, they may not end up on their head, but they aren't going to stop rolling until they hit the bottom.
And I.
I'm very concerned.
Yeah. And Steve, I don't know if you have anything additional. I mean, I think that's exactly why he's having the risk management look at it, but.
The update you gave is the update Ben gave me as well.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
One other comment that I would make on the issue of. I wasn't asking for a structure to be built.
Right.
I was asking for an orange cone and some tape. Because I think it is dangerous. I think kids are curious. And I could see someone walking through there and taking one step too many, as I almost did with my walker. The I also, while I understand going to risk management, I think it's a good and proper thing to do. I also do not think insurance covers serious injury or death of a child. Money doesn't replace people. Even money coming from our insurance company.
Okay. So.
And that's why I appreciated our last applicant. With a wall smaller than that one. Or with a height smaller, shorter than that one, putting in some type of.
I would dare say that nothing that comes before this planning commission with a retaining wall of any size will get approved without that.
In the future.
In the future. So, yes, member.
Well, I voiced my concerns about the big retaining wall behind units five and six. The last meeting, my, just thinking further about that, I'm concerned that kids playing out on that cul-de-sac at the end of Round Hill. Put a ball, ball rolls down the hill, picks up speed, goes right over the big retaining wall. You know, if they're not familiar with that area, or they're too young to really be observing of what's going on. And they go running down there thinking they're going to just chase the ball. Are they going to be in for a, yeah, a surprise?
Yeah.
And if they go over that wall at first, there's some boulders down there. It's not side, there's boulders. I'm, yeah, I agree with.
And remember.
That Craig, that this is, this is a dangerous situation.
Yeah. Also, by the way, on the Round Hill Unit Four. That retaining wall or that need for a barrier is because of an ongoing violation by Mr. Juisty of the order not to of the grading plan, of the landscaping plan. His pool and his excavation was in contravention to the ordinance of two thousand and sixteen. And I at least see it with what I view as some element of common sense. Maybe we should ask him to pay the five bucks for the orange cone and the tape.
Yes. In order.
Yeah, this this retaining wall keeps coming up as a safety issue and I'm viewing this. We're kind of having a hard time back and forth saying, well, it's not a violation. It is a violation. This is a work site. The whole Round Hill development is a work site. I would suggest we just have Myosha go on there, do their little thing and have them make a decision if it's a safety hazard or not.
Director Peterson, is that something that we could ask staff to contact MeoSh to do a site visit? Is that?
Sure, we can do that.
And we'll follow up on that on the, the next meeting. Is that agreeable to everybody else?
Yes.
Uh, member Merlin?
Yeah, I thought we had. No, that was that was on a different part of, that was at Southern retaining wall that we had asked Mr. Director Peterson to have an engineer walk through. So that will come up at a later point in the meeting today.
Thank you. Anything else on this topic? We'll follow up on it at our next meeting. So, okay. Any other business outside of the rules of conduct, which we'll conclude with? Member Merlin?
Let's start with the work plan.
Yes.
The two thousand and twenty-one work plan that Director Peterson in your illness last week, you had. It was on our agenda, but and that's because Mr. Rizzi asked to be, have it reviewed again, I think at a prior meeting. I just want to say that when I looked at that. I couldn't imagine anyone having any degree of common sense or listening to the citizens of this township would have put the gathering space, number one, on their list. However, I think I owe you an apology. I thought you were out of your mind when you presented that plan to us. Several of us said it was dead on arrival, I think at our last meeting. But I admit, must admit, you were acting in accordance with our capital improvement plan and placing the community gathering space on your priorities list. It is a desirable project and is the largest single project in the two thousand and twenty-one projects list on our CIP. Now, the gathering space was two point one seven five million when you include the amphitheater and the streetscape. Um, there's also a synthetic ice ring for another hundred and fifty. And that, if my memory is correct, was to be located in or adjacent to the gathering space. This is also viewed as a desirable project and it could be considered part of the community gathering space based on old drawings. That is another hundred and fifty-two, the two point one seven five, so you're now at two point three. The Butrick Station outbuilding for four hundred thousand is also a desirable project as well on the CIP. Listed just above replacing a bobcat for the pathways and just below replacing the fire chief's vehicle. I forgot in which month, or I forget in which month the fire chief identified this outbuilding as essential to the fire station number one rebuild. But it was quite close to February when the CIP was approved. But the Board of Trustees perhaps can be forgiven. It's not placing this outbuilding as essential. Since when Fire Station Number One rebuild was first brought before the Board of Trustees for approval. It was not mentioned, nor had it been in earlier public presentations that I attended, that this was a prerequisite to the building of Fire Station One. In fact, there are only four essential projects in our capital improvement plan for this year. Building one point three million, the biggest being the local road maintenance of one point two million. There is a phone system, a hose replacement and LED lighting conversion being the other three. So I have to say it was not Director Peterson, but the Board of Trustees who must have been out of their minds, keep these priorities as they are. And perhaps the planning commission and the town manager as well, since under the guidelines and the CIP process, the town manager and the planning commission evaluate the CIP package in light of additional information and makes final programming decisions before sending the CIP onto the township board. At least this planning commission demanded that the PFAS remediation have its place in this CIP. Um, which took us from twenty-seven million to forty million. And that was rather late in the process and I congratulate our acting chair tonight, Mr. Nord Dyke, for being one of the leaders of that effort. In having it placed on. It's interesting to me that essential projects are defined under our guidelines as projects that remedy a condition dangerous to public health, welfare and safety. If PFAS doesn't meet those standards, I don't know what does. And yet it was not identified as a project even on the capital improvement plan until late in the process. And interestingly enough, the town manager. When he made, put the request in, signed it, Ben Swayze, on behalf of the planning commission to make clear that it was their or our problem, not his perhaps. When the project description confirms that the money will not, also, the project description that Mr. Swayze prepared confirms that the money will not be coming from the general fund or from general obligation bonds or from any special assessment for PFAS. It may come from the water fund, from revenue bonds, federal grants, state grants or the airport. I think it now becomes clear why work didn't really start on interim remediation until recently. That's because the township is waiting for someone else to pay the bills to keep our citizens safe. And for two years, they complained and they complained and we did very little. I could go on with the problems in the CIP process forever. But now when I'm looking now that I'm looking so carefully, because I know how important it is to department work plans. Even if the CIP was based in large part on old data and input. And that generally based on input from the board and staff without citizen involvement of any consequence. Or that consequence was years ago. But I do understand the seriousness of the CIP process to our staff. The lack of a project for PFAS shows how little the CIP process is really thought of. My personal favorite entry that I've seen so far is for the Township Hall server replacement. This is viewed as an essential project. The request is dated September one, twenty twenty-one. Our staff has great foresight beyond even what I thought. The cost is twenty-five thousand and that cost will be funded by twenty thousand from the general fund, ten thousand from the fire fund and ten thousand from the building fund. And the request sheet was completed by our town manager. You can all come to your own conclusions as to the skill sets of our town manager. Some may think, as I do, that he should have an administrative assistant help with this complex math and calendar skills. But in all seriousness, he should have one that can proofread things. So a lot of silly mistakes that occur regularly can be eliminated and that he can spend his time doing the things he should be spending his time doing. But what this proves is the work plans and the capital improvement plans are just pro forma exercises in bureaucratic baloney. The CIP went through a number of reviews and a lot of things were not caught, things that impact other projects. The Fire Station Number Two Outbuilding, being an essential precursor to the Fire Station One starting, was actually, in one sentence, it wasn't there as a precursor and a condition. But it was going to be used for storage was the one sentence in the CIP process. Those things could have been linked in someone's mind and then on the staff and then planned for far in advance. Another review that never occurred in any meaningful sense was public input. The township should make the draft CIP available to the public to comment on, rather than the public having to search it out and then not getting it up on our website sufficiently in advance so they could be informed on it when the board or committee met where they could comment. Until our town government from top to bottom takes seriously their obligations to the citizens of this township and start thinking critically. We'll continue to receive rubbish like this work plan and like the CIP. And still we start holding people accountable for critical thinking. We will not improve our community. Putting up signs everywhere around the township or streetscaping places like the thirty-sixth street interchange for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Don't help our community. Building a fancy community gathering space in front of the library will be at times useful, but it should have cost one point three million. And do we need two amphitheaters? I would, I have concluded that this is BS piled on BS and that does not make a community, nor do median strips on charlatoy. Listening to all the priorities of our citizens is what is necessary. And that is my long-winded monologue on the work plan.
Yes, I have a question for staff about something he mentioned. I know you talked about the Board of Trustees and the CIP. My understanding of a CIP process is that the planning department has great insight and recommendations to the Board of Trustees for what they think are priorities within the community. I would like to know what your part of that process of the CIP process is. Do you make recommendations to the Board of Trustees? Or are they just coming up with these ideas on their own? My understanding with the process with the planning department is that the planning department looks at deficits or things that are not up to code or things within the community that need upgraded and prioritize them to either the Board of Directors or the Board of Trustees for them for recommendations from the planning department, what you would recommend. I want to know what your process, what your, your participation in this process was.
Sure. So as I'll probably wander around a little bit here since, you know, Craig was kind of wandering around between the CIP and the work plan as well. So let me just back up and say, in terms of the work plan, you know, that comes from, that comes from the master plan. So that master planning process that we go through, you know, we invite the, you know, the residents and we hear all the comments. And, you know, we get, you know, a whole list of different things that the community thinks we should be doing. So as a result. So as a result of that, um, you know. There's kind of a, there's kind of a, call it a list of items that, you know, the. The community has told us through that planning process to do. Now admittedly, residents don't know, uh, you know, what. What might be a planning function, what might be a, a DDA function, what might be a township board function. So. You know, we just hear this collective thing, uh, uh, these ideas of, of what to do. That was really how the work plan that we used now got formulated. Uh, that's the work plan that you adopted. Uh, the Planning Commission adopted, um, twice. So those are the things that we've heard from the community. Those are the things that they want us to work on. What we thought might be an interesting way to sort of evaluate it every year was rather than have. Three or four things every year, to have that so whole running list, if you will, so you could sort of see, you know, what's been done, what's. What may be worked on. Um, the idea of the, uh, the order that it's in. Really came from, as a result of the master planning process, what we did, uh, back in 19 was after that. We had what we call a joint meeting, the Township Board, Planning Commission, the DDA, the zoning board, all met with all of these. Different projects and ranked them, scored them, if you will. And that's how you have your list that you have and the order that it's in. Again, one of the ideas of keeping that whole list was. There could be opportunities that present themselves because maybe, maybe MDOT is going to do something, maybe the Road Commission is going to do something and maybe something that was lower on that list. You know, might get elevated. So kind of the idea of keeping that whole list was to kind of, you know, show everybody, here's the things that we've heard from the community. So that's kind of where those things come from and, and some of those things, of course, are what might get plugged into. Um, the CIP process. So in terms of the CIP process, what happens is, uh, the Township Manager sends out, you know, at. At, I don't know, in the fall or something, I can't remember exactly when he does it, you know, um, a request for, hey, do you have any, you know, new projects that have come up? Um, maybe, and of course it doesn't happen every year, right? But maybe a new planning process took place. We're going to be doing the strategic plan. I'm sure we'll hear a few more new things that are coming out. We're going to be doing a parks and rec plan. I'm sure we'll hear a few new ideas, uh, from the community. So then. Depending on what type of projects they are and if they're capital improvements and meet the requirements for capital improvements. And if it were to, you know, be something that would hit my department, it, you know, maybe it's the parks, maybe it's the, you know. Buying a truck for the, you know, buildings and grounds crew, then those things get submitted to Ben as, as far as that CIP process go. And then all of the departments are submitting those same forms for different types of capital improvements.
So you don't have like a small work group within the township, like. I would think the planning department would be high on that list.
Well, I would say that's probably how Ben views the department heads as his work group to submit the stuff to him for inclusion into, excuse me, into the CIP.
Okay, but you don't give a formal list of, these are things, capital improvements within the township that we feel are really important based on safety, you know.
It's based on the stuff that we hear through those, that master planning process, through those different plans that are developed, things that we've heard, uh, from the community.
Okay, but not based on your knowledge and your expertise in the planning department based on safety or, you know. Again, planning is not my profession, but.
Well, I guess I would like to say that that, that is part of that process that developed those. Those plans that went through and that we have adopted.
Um. This. Was ranked, these are listed in the order, they were ranked during the joint meetings. So the, the list. In the order ranked, in these joint meetings, you say were joint meetings between. The Board of Trustees, the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the staff.
And the DDA.
And the DDA, of course, this would be a DDA priority. Um. And the public input was before the master plan, which would have occurred when?
We approved it in 2019, I think it was August.
When was the public input?
Uh, during that whole process.
What was the whole process?
Probably, um, probably close to a year.
So that takes it back probably to 2017, or you may do something like you did on the pathways. Which is to give us which pathway would we like, but wouldn't put any dollars next to any of the pathways. So that we had no ability to make an informed judgment. As to, because I'd like a G5, but I can't afford it. Um, so I guess I question the validity of the community input. You made no attempt to market. That to push market out. To get people into those meetings, you said.
I'm not sure what meetings you're referring to now.
Whatever the meetings were, you got public input onto the master plan.
I, I think we did quite a bit of public input.
I would, having been at most of those meetings, I would challenge that assessment as a member of the public, you did your best to hide the truth amongst the facts.
Yeah, I disagree.
Um, well, by the way, do you view? This was. Whose plan is this? Is this your department's plan? Because there are things here that aren't in your department, are they?
It's the, it's the work plan that the Planning Commission has approved.
Oh, so it's our plan?
It is.
Oh, this was before, okay, I can, I can beg off this one because I wasn't on the commission then, but this was, it was our priority that set these.
It was the priority list that was developed as I described, and it has been the list that the Planning Commission has used for our work plan. Yes.
And you say for several years now.
For two years.
For two years because you have to go back pre-pandemic into 19 and then potentially into 17 and 18.
No, because we adopted it in 19 and then the Planning Commission developed that work plan as our items that, that we would continue to work on in 20, and then we adopted it in 21.
So that this planning commission. Apparently didn't go to the outdoor gathering space public meeting. Where it was so roundly criticized because of parking issues, traffic issues. Um. Where, who would be using the park? Um, there were a raft of reasons why the public was, while very much in wanting a community gathering space. Um, but you didn't show them the one that was also being built down in the Lower Village Design Plan at the time you showed them the library one. Now, they could have put the pieces together if they were smart enough to look at all the right cubby holes. So this is where I think you have all the facts there, but don't ever tell someone a fair story. But that is just between you and I, something we'll have to agree to disagree on.
So I, I don't, I'm a, I am an interrupt. Um. We, we had questions on the work plan. Do we, are there additional questions? I mean, I guess Director Peterson, when, when is this coming up for review again? What's the cycle on that?
Uh, so typically we have it in front of you in January.
Okay, so in. Five months, we're looking, five, six months, we're looking at a new work plan. And so I, I just wonder.
I want to ask two questions then, if I could. First is, is money being spent right now revising the outdoor gathering space? Work plan, because there's $275,000, I think, in. At least in the CIP to do that this year. Is that money being spent now?
That's a better question for the DDA. I'm not sure what they are working on, so I, I wouldn't know if they've spent any money on that.
Okay, so you don't know that one. Second one was the hot topics for the website. We just had a website revision in the not too distant past, in the last couple of months. Is that. Satisfy the second item here?
Yeah, I think we have a spot on there, um, if I'm not mistaken, for sort of a question and answer, because I know we've gotten quite a few comments from. Citizens about different, you know, ideas or things to look at. So I think that is on the new website.
Okay, sort of like the comprehensive plan you find. After going through 14 layers of indexes, but anyway. Does anyone who is at, on this side of the table, have they noticed any appreciable improvement in our website because of that? Update.
I did notice the question piece, I think, but other than that, no, I still, I couldn't, I couldn't find the board meeting minutes or the board agenda prior to that meeting. At all, and I think I'm pretty good with technology.
I couldn't find the comprehensive plan until I went and looked for it underneath your department, I think. Way at the bottom of the list, but it's our comprehensive plan, so that's how we run the township. Um, one would have thought it would have been given higher press, higher priority if in fact you wanted the citizens to really see it.
Okay, um. I, I, I'm just wondering, like, we're, we're, we're going.
In circles and going.
Well, we're going deep in the past when we have a.
A dead force.
We have a new work plan that is six months away that, that.
I know, I'm ready to move on.
That we can start, uh, well, yeah, but what's the opportunity from looking at this? It, it is an opportunity. Uh, to work hand in hand with Director Peterson and his department, uh, and the next one, there were, and it just. There, there were a lot of changes that I think we can all agree on, or a lot of things that changed with this pandemic. Where an outdoor gathering space certainly would look, uh, not as high of a priority, uh, as other things and also.
And two of them would look even less of a priority.
Yeah, and the PFAS thing, I think is very much a high priority for this township and was not nearly, uh. A, as large, uh, as it, as it is now, uh, at that time, is I don't think there was nearly the information of what was happening.
I think there was the information, that's what was happening for a while. I think what was not clear. I think what, looking at the documents would tell me is that this township wasn't going to pay money. Of its own, it was waiting for someone to pay for it. And that this year, we now have started to make improvements because the federal grant is here. And we started earlier than that, but McTrustees McDonald and Kessel were saying in February, we shall spend our own money. And when was it finally approved?
This month.
So, uh, member, you have a comment question?
I do have a quick.
Nord Hook.
On the Nord Hook on the, uh.
Send it back.
The, the board, uh, did approve $224,000 for the temporary remediation. Of the 40 homes for whole house PFAS filters. That letter is going out to notify those homes that they have the option. Uh, at the, it's not, it's no charge to them. There's also a bottled water option going out to them. That letter should be going out this week.
When did, was this approved by the board?
This month.
Was it? I thought it was at the end of June.
Yeah, the end of June.
It was the end of June.
And so it's now three weeks later?
Still pushing to get my letter. So, yeah.
Where's the bottleneck?
And, and the Swayze's office.
I think it's been more than three weeks.
And it's been approved and the information has been forwarded and the Health Department has sent the addresses of the homes to receive the letters. Just waiting for them to get out there. We have, uh, $224,000 approved to go.
Again, a, a job, a very good executive assistant.
Would help a lot.
Would help a lot.
Also, Kent County Health Department is providing, uh, Aqua Sana Point of Use PFAS water filters. At no charge, plus they'll pay for up to $300 worth of installation costs. And replacement filters until the city water gets out there to the homes that have trace amounts of PFAS. So, and that also will be included in the letter to those homes or the bottled water. Just a quick update.
So, uh, any other? Uh, business?
Yes, yes, I mean, we're finished with the work plan.
I, I think.
Yes, I am.
All right, I, I, I think we have an opportunity. To, again, work hand in hand, uh, with, with Director Peterson. It's a different planning commission that existed, uh, that exists today that, than existed then.
The next item I'd like to bring up is the, um. Statement by Director Peterson that he would be able to get someone out, an engineer from Fishbeck out to look at that south retaining wall. As a current safety issue, uh, and the catch basin behind it to see whether that is. Impinging on or whatever one does to a foundation to make it less stable by coming under the wall. Um, have you had a chance to get that engineer out as you said?
Yep, uh, our engineer's been out, he's given me a report. I can certainly, um, pass it on to all of you if you'd like it. Um, I, I'll try to quickly summarize it if you want me to.
I would love to see it, but please summarize.
Yeah, um, so certainly not a surprise after the event that there was some soil erosion, I think, as you saw out there. Um, uh, they did not find any that had left the site, so that's a good sign. Uh, he also did not find anything that was compromising the wall. And I think, uh, the way he summarized it is, because I think you guys have both said you saw some kind of water coming, you know, out. Sort of south of the wall. Um, his comment was, he would have been concerned if it wasn't, because that's the way that wall is designed, that that water should sort of be weeping out of there. So. Um, it was a good report on the wall and they certainly have some continued work to do, uh, with soil erosion. Um, which, as you mentioned before, it being a construction site, they will continue to have until it's fully stabilized.
Have you? When you were walking around, looked at the bayou or the area next to Thornapple River Drive? On both the east and west side of the roadie property. Which is. Full of sand, locked. Weirs, et cetera, and you're saying none of that came from the site in the inspector's mind?
Um. Yeah, I guess the report was that the, because we had both our engineer as well as the soil erosion inspector from the county go out there and he did not find anything that had left the site.
Did he submit a report as well?
Yes, he did.
Was there a timeline on that? Because I think some of that was. Before some of the remediation with the wall was put up, so I'm wondering if he just gave a.
What?
A snapshot between this date and the state, there's no more erosion or something?
Well, you have to remember, there's also a whole nother tributary that feeds that weir that you're talking about.
The other question I have is, did they happen to notice the catch basin? That wasn't there?
Uh, as I mentioned, they noticed that there was some erosion over top of it, yeah.
No, no, the fact that there was a catch basin that was supposed to be there, that wasn't there, that was on the plan.
I'd have to go back. I, I don't recall him saying that there was a missing catch basin, but I'll have to go back to his report.
Did you go with him on this?
I did not.
Member Moxley.
When I toured the site, I could see where catch basin should be, but it was pretty well covered with. It must have had a erosion mat with sand and soil over it. Next time I go out there, I'll take a shovel and dig it out. I'll see it.
I actually think it was because when they raised the wall two more blocks, they had a shorter. Um, concrete.
Culvert.
Whatever culvert or however everyone calls it.
Yeah.
Down there and they either failed to take it out and replace it with a larger one. And just covered it over. Whether by accident or not, um, because there's clearly a depression where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, you can see the soil coming down and then there's a.
Because there's also no, there's no sediment catch basin or sediment filters in any of the other catch basins. Either, and the. Spillways going into the roadie property, coming out from where the stormwater system should be working through that wall were dry as a bone. After all that rain. So I'd be very much interested in seeing the report of Fishbeck as well as the report. By the county engineer. And, um.
Yeah, that's easy. We'll get that out to you guys.
I definitely like to see that.
Can you pay, can you look into the? Can you pay, can you look into this this catch basin?
I believe I know the engineer did, so it's in the report, I'm sure.
Yeah, i- if not, like any commentary we can get from him, Steve, I think would.
Yeah, could you ask him to look actually at the plans and see the the round with the X in it? Because it's right there beyond to the unit five. Right at the back corner and it's a hundred and sixty feet from the nearest catch basin to the east.
He's pretty familiar with the site.
He's been out there once or twice, hasn't he?
He's been out there once or twice.
And is he who gave it some of the earlier clearances? I did hard to answer that question, Mr. Peterson.
We have several engineers that go out there. So I guess it depends who was out there, but yeah, certainly Mike Bearvot's, our township engineer, has been out there several times and gave clearances several times. Again, it's a construction site, you know, even after the inspection was done, I think we've had two big rain events. So I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, the county has been after them for other soil erosion things, even after the last one. So.
You don't get copies of county correspondence with Juicy over Round Hill?
You know, not maybe on a routine basis, but certainly we ask for it, we get it.
I would think with this developer, you would very much want to ask for it.
We we ask for it quite a bit. I I just don't want to promise that we get every correspondence that the road commission has sent to him, so.
Why not?
That's a question for the road commission.
I have a question. Do you mind?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I just have a gen- kind of a general question, but it's related to this and I'm going to use the wrong terminology, so I apologize. Do we as a township have a rule, I'm going to use that word, which is probably not the appropriate terminology, that if a builder builds anything, a home, a development, whatever, within our township and violates certain stipulations, which again, probably not the right word, that they are not allowed to move forward with any other buildings or any other developments or anything within the township until those ones are fixed?
No, and the attorneys that we have had in the past, our attorneys here tonight, they can comment if they would like, but have told us that we really can't stop somebody from.
Other townships and municipals, they do, I mean, and again, maybe she can answer that for us. Other other townships and cities do have something similar to that. Is that correct? Anybody who ever knows the answer?
We don't have one and they've told us that we couldn't do that, so.
Okay, my understanding is that other.
You know which specific that we could give point of reference for her to.
I I do, but it's not in the state of Michigan, but it is a.
That might be.
Exactly.
Michigan, so.
But my understanding from somebody from planning people, which is not my profession, that there are ways to hold people accountable for violating certain rules blatantly violating and repeatedly violating certain rules within a township or a city or a municipal, whatever you want to say, to prevent them from allowing them to move forward until they remediate other things that they have done.
So if I could, if we could ask our attorney's office to prepare a memo on the remedies for a contractor that the township has when they're not adhering to rules, regulations, code. I think that would be helpful for for you, I suspect, Steve.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's even different though than from what Wendy is saying. So we certainly have the means to stop a project. We stopped around.
But that's like a broader remedy. So fair enough.
That is stuff that we have the ability to do. What we haven't been able to do is Tom Juice has been a bad boy over here. So you can't start project number two because you were bad over here. So that's something that they told us that we couldn't do.
And that is my my understanding that other places have that.
Yeah, like I I think what you're asking then are remedies outside of the current project.
Correct, starting new projects within the township when they have violations of.
Or stopping other projects.
Other new.
Any any remedy outside of.
Yeah, to me would be new projects because they have to come for approval process. So is there a way to stop new projects from a developer who has blatantly and repeatedly violated recommendations, rules, whatever in the past?
Violated our ordinances.
I'm using the wrong words. I I just, my understanding is there is a way to prevent people from repeat, especially a builder contractor from repeatedly doing this.
Well, and and, you know, not to, you know, go down rabbit hole, but certainly if somebody came that was had violated, you know, some rules and we had problems with them before and they proposed a new project, certainly I think everybody would be, you know, the antennas would all be up and you would no longer assume that, well, you know, they'll they'll do what they say they're going to do. No, and I'll use Round Hill as an example, right? So the twenty twenty amendments are much different than twenty sixteen, right? I mean, we built in how many other safeguards that weren't in there the first time. So I think that's probably more likely of what, but we can get an answer to the question.
I would like because that's obvious by tonight's meeting about the car wash. I mean, everybody talked about the storm drains and where the water comes from. I mean, people are going to learn and keep asking more questions for new projects coming forward, whether it's that contractor or not. But I am talking specifically about certain contractors moving forward with new projects wanting township approval. If we can limit them somehow based on remedy.
And with our twenty twenty ordinance, which was much tougher, how long did it take him to violate that? By excavating behind unit four?
I know that's your opinion that that's a violation back there. I I think we said, at least staff said that we needed to see these plans to see what the impacts were. But I I hear I hear what you're saying, Craig, and.
Steve, what you were talking about is a stormwater engineering system and how it all worked together. What I was looking at is the grading, the site plan showing the grading, the site plan and the landscape plan. Didn't have, it had a tree where the pool was going to be. That's a violation. Well, common sense tells you that's a violation of landscaping plan.
Fair enough. You can't, you can't do the landscaping until the site is completed.
But if you're laying out a pool and then you come in for a variance on the pool, he has taken a repeated attitude of I'll do what I want and then beg for forgiveness.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue that. I I'm just suggesting that we needed to, we needed to go through the process to see what was going on.
But the process was, at least several of us up here that have gone through there was pretty crystal clear. On there was a violation having nothing to do with stormwaters at that point, but that's.
Member Nord Hook.
I thought it was a violation of the setback to do any excavating in that.
And that rear.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the setback, no excavation to be taking place in there. And he had clearly excavated that hill.
I don't think it says excavation. I think what it says is no structure, if I remember.
Let's verify that one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a twenty-five foot setback there.
Yeah.
Oh, and one other, just one last comment.
And I think there was, I think there was even some language in there that exempted some things in there, but but you're right. I mean, it was pretty specific that we didn't want anything going on back in that twenty-five foot area for structures.
The whole hill level of the yard, so that was to me is excavation.
But by the way, just as a factual matter, when you send the engineer out again, ask him to look for catch basin one oh six on the stormwater retention system on the plans.
Any other business where we move on to rules of conduct discussion? During none, move on to the rules of conduct discussion before I hand it over to Member Merlin. I'd like to thank council for being present. And again, thank you, staff for staying through this. I think we're, we we are aspiring to 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 accommodate to what the 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 public has has been asking us and 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 certainly have been following the rules of conduct. And I think the, we just want to understand where there are areas that we can deviate from the current rules of conduct and still be within the Open Meetings Act and other things. So am I setting this up properly, Member Merlin?
Generally speaking, um, I guess my view and I speak as a securities lawyer, not as municipal lawyer. And in securities law, we do frown on fraud. But the I think this is incredibly beyond what is necessary under what I read in the municipal statutes. I would ask council whether they have seen any set of rules or conduct, well, first, actually, before we get to counsel. Steve, could you summarize for us what you orally tell two members in addition to what's in these rules of conduct? Because in your oral discussions, as I recall them, listening to earlier meetings of the planning commission, you talk about members communicating with members and the hesitancy in doing that.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Could you summarize what you say orally to supplement these rules of conduct? As when I have heard you talk before, you have supplemented these by adding on restrictions on members talking to one another.
I don't recall adding any restrictions on, we hand out the rules of conduct annually to the planning commission, to the zoning board of appeal, so I I don't recall adding any restrictions. So I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Does anyone on this who is here tonight recall any previous discussion where he has talked about members not talking to members?
What I recall, being having served the longest of those who are here is that Steve would walk through the rules of conduct and he would cite examples that members should not talk to other members about upcoming agenda items. I think that's a fair.
Outside this meeting.
What's that? Outside of the, outside of this meeting, outside of this meeting, yes, that we should not be talking about.
So even asking factual questions.
I I, as I recall, he suggested that we not talk to each other. And again, I'd ask him to 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 verify this, but talk to each other about upcoming or make deliberations might be a better way of putting it about upcoming agenda items outside of this meeting.
Well, asking factual questions is a lot different than deliberations.
Well, I that I'm telling you what I've heard is deliberations.
What I heard before was that we get our information from you, Steve, and to relay questions back to you, those factual questions. That is why Chairman Rizzi, when I sent him an email and he responded to me, said, wow, this is the first time I think I've ever responded to a member in my years on the planning commission by an email.
I think I've reminded you guys several times that probably the safest thing to do is to remember to keep all of the deliberation in here, so the public doesn't hear that. Oh, yeah, when I was talking to Ralph last night. So I think I've probably reminded everybody to keep all of the conversation here. I don't ever recall telling everybody to only communicate through me.
I do, but anyway, okay. Now I'll ask council, in their view, is this, are these rules of conduct, typical rules of conduct for a municipality in the state of Michigan?
We, do we have counsel on a microphone? Sorry.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
This is the end you're talking to. Got it.
If you would identify yourself, just so that we can put that in the minutes.
Hi, I'm Ann Searing with Foster Swift and I'm here in place of Mr. Homer who cannot be here. So I it's a little hard to say what's typical because, you know, there's, you know, hundreds of municipalities. I think looking at your, the one thing that struck me that looking at your ordinance was, I think it's a it's a little more in depth with respect to the ex parte communication and with respect to the site visits. I I can't say that those are not in any bylaws, but typically what happens is is that the statute says you can, in your bylaws, you know, determine what a conflict of interest is, you're required to do that, except where the township has already done that. So a little bit of a concern here is that your zoning ordinance has administrative procedures in it, which already outline what a conflict of interest is according to the township. So the way I looked at this, it doesn't seem like the things you've done here are in conflict with that. They're a little bit more detailed and over and above maybe of explanation of that. But that would be one thing I would really caution you is that your ordinance already has conflict of interest provisions in there and you just as playing commission can't do anything that is in conflict with that. I don't see anything here that is in conflict with that.
Would.
Yeah, Member Merlin.
Would you say that we cannot do anything in conflict or we can't do anything that would breach our ordinance? We can, we can have, hold ourselves to a higher expectation than our zoning ordinance sets out, can we not?
Yes, the problem of conflict of interest, which is really, you got to be careful about is that, I don't know, I don't know what that is.
That's seven years of contracts between the township and its former supervisor on a side business that he had. We don't know whether these were competitively bid, we don't know whether they were disclosed that he had a controlling interest in this.
Well, clearly that's, anything that has to do with personal financial gain is is clearly a conflict of interest. I I haven't seen that, so I can't comment on that particularly. The problem is, is that you got to be very careful because if you and and this comes up quite a bit in in municipal law where it's actually a breach of your duty if you don't vote where you should vote. So if you decide to recuse yourself for a reason that's not within one of the rules, that's actually a breach of your duty. So it's a very complicated sort of fact based thing depending on what the conflict is.
Let me raise a particular example. I recuse myself from a recent resolution or a recent matter because I had a longtime business relationship with two prominent families in the township and in Grand Rapids. And this involved one of the members of that family with whom I'd had dealings with. And I was concerned that I might get a phone call or whatever that says, hey, can't you help? And so I didn't want to get that phone call. I want to be able to say I'm not involved. And I said on my conflicts check when I took this position that I wasn't going, I was going to recuse myself from all issues relating to either of those two families.
Well, and so currently in your administrative procedures, there's a few provisions that could cover that situation. One is under B four, says a member has such a, has such close personal ties to the applicant that the member cannot reasonably be expected to exercise sound judgment in the public interest or participation, this very broad one, participation in the manner might violate the letter or sphere of members code of professional responsibility. So.
Do we have a code of professional responsibility?
Well, I think, for example, if you are an attorney sitting on a board, you have.
But I'm not acting as a lawyer here.
But you have a code of professional responsibility that you're not acting in your capacity as a lawyer. But for example, if these are clients of yours, for example.
They were years ago.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. If it's client, if for you, for you to act, if if they see you as their lawyer, for example.
They don't.
Well, I'm, so you work for a law firm and.
I worked for a law firm and I was inside general counsel for a large multinational. I was inside general counsel for Amway Corporation.
So, but I guess my, my point is, is if, if you're sitting there as a planning commission member and you're acting in your capacity to playing commission member, and in the audience and coming before you is somebody that's a client of Warner Norcross, there could.
They are not a client of Warner Norcross.
I'm, I'm using an example if, if they were.
Oh, if they were, I'd recuse myself for sure.
That's right. But that would be a, it would be because you have a code of professional responsibility.
But that is because of my duties to Warner Norcross.
That's what, that's what this is covering. That's what I'm saying.
But the, my relationship with this, I had no longstanding personal relationship with this person.
Yeah, the, the question I thought it was asked would, what, what would be an example of where it would violate your court of professional responsibility? So I was giving you an example. I wasn't particularly talking about the example that you gave.
Do you think that as a policy matter, I mean, your duty is to protect the township from liability.
Correct.
Your duty is not to do perhaps what the citizens would like the township to do, or what we perceive the citizens would like, what the township would like the township to do. Because they might like more transparency than you think is necessary and might subject the township to more liability to provide that transparency.
Well, my, my job, my, my client is township, and my responsibility is the township. Now I give legal advice and I can, I can give my legal advice. You guys are, the township are also the policymakers. So you can take the advice, not take the advice, you could take part of the advice. So it's not for me to say what the policy should be. I give legal advice on what I think there are legal issues involved with the policy, but you guys are the policymakers.
Okay, do you think that our rules of conduct, if we wanted to move the risk aversion scale, and that's why I put the policy issues on a continuum, if you've seen either one of my two memos. Have you seen either one of them?
No, I have not seen those.
We, she's only been provided the rules of conduct.
Okay. Well, I provided, I asked the question regarding rules of conduct that we're going to go to your firm. Three general sort of continuum questions on policy matters. What is the general risk tolerance of that we want to have here? These rules of conduct set a very high, they would call a lot of things deliberations, which I don't think under some of the case law I've read would be viewed as deliberations. They may be viewed as asking a factual question or getting a fact answered by someone. What do, what is the legal definition of deliberations?
It's, well, if you're talking about, what I think you're talking about is what would be considered deliberation towards a decision under the Open Means Act. Is that correct?
Correct.
So anytime a quorum, and I want to, I want to kind of give my explanation, and then I want to give where I think some missteps happen unintentionally, not with this group, I'm just talking generally.
Oh, like our board, which does it on a regular basis, have a different feel of the Open Meeting Act?
Member Ron.
I understand.
Thank you.
So you are required to comply with the Open Means Act when you are making a decision or deliberating towards a decision. There's no real definition of what that is, but what it really means is that a quorum of the board are talking about a matter of public policy. Okay. So clearly, if you've got, you know, a, a seven-member board and you get a quorum of four, if four people get together at the local coffee shop and start talking about a PUD amendment application, clearly a violation of the Open Means Act. What's a little bit grayer, and what I think these rules are sort of getting at, is where, and there's cases involving the University of Michigan that tried this, these, what they call, there's a couple of different scenarios. One is the polling scenario, which is where you try to get, you know, answers on a decision. So I can poll, let's just say I want to poll you, you, you on what you guys think of this. If I call each one of you individually and ask you what you think of it, not a violation of the Open Means Act. But if I say, like, let's just say I have a five-member board. If I say to board member one, what do you think? They tell me. I ask board member two, what do you think? They tell me. Board member three, now there's a quorum. They tell me, still not a problem, unless I start saying, oh, that's exactly what board member two thinks, or what board number one thinks. So there's sort of those, if you break off in little groups of sub-quorums and then start talking, I think that's what the concern is.
Can you not also, and see some of the case law that I've looked at, or some of the AG's opinion, I forget what, or some lawyer's opinion? You can have sub-quorum groups as well that are actually deliberating. If they take, for example, 11 different applications and then up to the board goes only one.
Yeah, that's correct. It's what you're talking about are committees. Committees themselves might be their own public body, subject to the Open Means Act. It depends on what they're doing. If they're purely advisory, they may not be. But what you're talking about is eliminating choices for the full body. In those cases, I would recommend those, those types of committees should be open to the public.
Real quick, so I want to make sure that I repeat and understand what you're saying there. So if we form a committee to investigate something, that's not limiting, it's just providing material back to the full planning commission. Would that be considered? We, we had a matter come before this planning commission, I'll give an example. We asked that a subcommittee, a subgroup investigate and then bring the results back. Nothing per se that is actual outside of a ordinance that wouldn't be specific to that project, but would be a larger, broader. In, in that situation, would it, and I can go into, you know, provide further detail, would it be considered a, under the Open Meetings Act, and would we be required to, to make that available to the public? I, I think by the way we are, but I'm curious your take.
Well, it would, it would depend on whether those that entity was making a decision, and that's a really gray area. For example, if, and I think a clear example is with, if you have an RFP. Okay, and it's not your fact situation, but I want to explain, and then maybe get, so if you have an RFP and you get five responses to the RFP, and you've got a committee that is looking at the RFPs and making recommendations, okay? If that committee takes all the information that they've gathered, gives all that information to the planning commission, you know, maybe with a recommendation, but gives you all five RFPs, all the notes on what they did, all the notes on the interviews, and you basically have what they have, likely going to be purely advisory. If what they do is take the five RFPs and narrow it down to two, you don't see those three RFPs, you don't know anything about what decision-making process they came to, to, to narrow it down, that's a committee that should be subject to the Open Means Act.
So in this example, if I may, it's not example, it's in fact what we are doing. We have a committee investigating a, a previous case just to, to understand the history and perhaps recommend a, recommend a, an ordinance or zoning change. Again, would that be something that would require?
What, the investigation part doesn't bother me. The recommendation about the zoning change would be something I'd have to take a second look at because.
I would agree with.
If what, if what you're doing, so you guys are responsible for making recommendations on zoning changes of full body. If, if, if you basically delegate that responsibility to a smaller body without giving the public maybe an impact on that, that's where I'd have a little bit of a concern. I'd want to know why you would want to have it without, outside of the public eye.
I, I don't think we are. I, we are making it open, as I understand it. So it's, it's more, I guess, understanding.
So this is one of those things where I, in, in a public meeting without, like, having the facts, I hate to say, yes, violation, no violation, because as you talk about risk adverse, you know, I might hypothetically, you know, given a fact, I might say, look, you know, we could probably say this is, this is a purely advisory, but here are the risks. If you open it up to the public, there are no risks from an Open Means Act perspective. Now, you got to have public comment, you got to have minutes, you got to have all of that. But from an Open Means Act perspective, so I'd want to know from, from you guys how risk adverse you are, and what's the benefit to keeping it, you know, out of the public eye.
And?
Member Nord.
My understanding is it's simply a group four members of this, this panel getting together to assemble a list of questions and request for documents and then assemble a report.
I, like I said, I probably want to talk, talk to you guys a little bit more about the, the facts and what the ultimate, what the ultimate.
Again, this is more from my understanding, so I, I'll, I'll push it off because it's moved, since we are making it public, so.
No deliberations or anything, just.
But it's a good, it's a good exercise to go through because I think a lot of times people just write off committees as being not open to the public, and some of them probably should be. So I think it's a good exercise every time you think about a committee as to what, what's their, it should be very clear about what their goals are, what their expectations are, what the deliverables are. And what, you know, if you want them to be purely advisory, you need to craft their, the formation of that committee very carefully to make sure that you're not unintentionally giving them authority to make decisions, even by taking away full, you know, decisions from the planning commission.
Member Ron.
One of the other questions I have is, in this, I take it there is a statutory definition of a conflict of interest as well?
Not for your purposes, the statute, the Michigan Planning Act says that, that, that you all can decide what a conflict of interest is. There's legal authority on what conflicts are. I mean, there's AG opinions in cases, but.
There are what?
Attorney general opinions and cases, but the statute, you're, it's actually pretty clear. There's, you know, there's, there's, there's lots of statutes that generally govern, you know, there's conflicts of people who, you know, governing public employees and public contracts, for example. If you're a public employee and you have a contract in your private business that comes before the board, there's statutes that govern that. There's statutes that involve conflicts of interest. But if you look to your own enabling legislation, which is the Michigan Planning Act, it says that the planning commission, here's what it says, it's interesting, it says, unless the legislative body, which is your township board, by ordinance defines conflict of interest for the purposes of the subsection, the planning commission shall do so in its bylaws. So it requires you guys to determine what the conflict of interest is. If the township hasn't already done that, there's zoning ordinance that already does that.
So is your recommendation that we remove the conflict of interest clause within our rules of conduct, since it is in fact covered in the zoning?
Well, my, I've been told that your, the zoning ordinance essentially acts as your bylaws, is that?
Well, yeah, I was going to ask a slightly different question, which is, should we have bylaws that are separate from the zoning ordinance?
Well, the, the problem with having the, the stuff in your zoning ordinance is that if you want to change it, you can't just change it by passing a policy resolution. You have to actually amend your zoning ordinance and go through the the public hearing process that you would of any other zoning or ordinance amendment. So I think if you want to change the, what I see in your, what I see in your, how the rules of, that you gave to me that I looked at, don't seem to be conflicting. They seem to be adding a little bit more detail on what the general zoning ordinance says. But if you wanted to change that and come up with your own definition as a planning commission, that would have to be something that would have, you have to change in the ordinance.
The rules of conduct themselves are not, I want to make sure I understand, are not in the zoning.
No.
But the conflict of interest definition is.
Correct.
Right. So then would we, to your question, that does it make sense to have the rules of conduct that is governed by the zoning?
Well, that's just what a conflict of interest is.
Okay.
That's not the Open Meetings Act compliance element of it. And from my perspective, one of the things I know that Mr. Homier and I have had long and engaged and very friendly discussions over this. But he must have warned you about me.
Did not know.
But there are things like this that suggest to me something he said we shouldn't have, which are annual in essence, compliance certifications.
Well, I think to the extent that you have annual compliance certifications and that you aren't dealing with it, I mean, it, when I look at the agenda, I mean, on your agenda, every time you have a conflict of interest check, correct?
We just started that.
Okay.
No, but that was just started.
Because of this, because my feeling is you have to make a statement saying, I don't have a conflict of interest on these. It's in the minutes, it's recorded to say that.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think you're, I think that's a good, a good step.
But shouldn't you also say, I don't have a potential conflict of interest in this?
Well, I think you're, I, I mean, I think when you make, when you make a conflict of interest declaration, it typically is either you know you have a conflict or you think you might. And if you think you might, you err on the side of making the declaration.
Well, that isn't what's in the zoning code. That's only applies to, I guess, lawyers up here. We're not acting as lawyers. I personally have a code of personal ethics that I find appearances of impropriety to be something I don't want to fall victim to because people assume the worst. And with a fully divided board right now, with many decisions for three, it's hard to get consensus on anything in this township right now.
Yeah, that, you know, and I think, I know what you're saying about the potential conflict. I think it's sort of written into, into the rules a bit because it says, for example, that participation in the matter might violate the spirit or letter or spirit of a member's code of professional responsibility.
What if they don't, aren't a lawyer?
Well, I mean, I think though, that I think when you talk about public bodies, you're really talking about volunteers, people who are, you're volunteering your time here. You guys aren't lawyers, you're not professional, you know, this is not your job, this is your volunteer work, correct? So I think what you're expected to do as a member is to say, look, I either know I have a, a potential conflict of interest, or I think that I do. And you disclose it, and then you guys can decide.
Right, but I think that I do shouldn't be based on a code of professional standard.
This is one of the five things here.
But no other one really captures that which we're talking about.
Which is what part of it?
Having a potential conflict of interest, you used to work for somebody, the township is proposing to sue, for example.
Well, I mean, so you, I guess what's the, I'm just thinking two steps ahead here. Are you saying that you shouldn't disclose that, or that you should?
I think you should.
And is it that you are concerned that these, it doesn't say, just, it says conflict of interest and not potential conflict of interest?
No, I think you should absolutely disclose it.
Okay.
But if it's not disclosed, the honor system seems not to have worked with officers of the township. We can't expect it to work, and not, your certificate can't work either, but at least there you have somebody. When it comes out, you can say, why did you do that?
Well, but I, but my, I guess my, I think, I mean, thinking out loud here, you're, you can write rules as strictly as you want. You can write rules that say potential conflict, write rules of conflict. They're only going to be as good as the people who are there to disclose them themselves. So I can't write a rule that's going to make somebody disclose something if they don't.
Agreed. Which is why one of the other questions I asked in an earlier draft was, should our rules be principles-based or rules-based? Because I can, we've been trained as lawyers to wiggle our way through any set of laws, regulations, or whatever, to find a way to do what the client wants to do, even if it's not in accord with the spirit of the legislation. I mean, I was asked as general counsel by a prominent local lawyer, if I did X, Y, and Z, I could have a building become eligible for a Brown's Field redevelopment. And I said, was our building the intended beneficiary of that? And he said, no. And I said, don't bring it to me. Goodbye.
Well, I'm.
That was just my, that wasn't my professional responsibility. Zealously representing my client may have said, I should go ahead and do that.
But I think the scenarios that I've heard, I think can be covered under one of these existing. But I think the scenarios that I've heard, I think can be covered under one of these existing. Because the example that you gave about, you know, business, you know, associates from, you know, the past could fit under the close personal ties. Now, now you take that one, for example, and you, you have, you have a judgment call as a member of the planning commission to determine whether you think there's a conflict of interest. I think my, my philosophy is always err on the side of caution, says that you member makes be excused from voting by the majority vote of the remaining members. So your fellow commissioners will basically sit in the decision-making responsibility to determine whether they think that whatever you're disclosing is an actual conflict of interest.
That is true. And it was brought up at the last meeting that if five of us, five of us all say we have a similar conflict of interest, then the board doesn't even have a quorum, or the commission doesn't have a quorum. And therefore they may have to say someone's got to vote. My view would be if an action violates my personal code of ethics, I'm not going to do it, whether or not this planning commission tells me to or not.
Well, I mean, but, but that would be, I think, an extraordinary set of circumstances. For example, I could see where, you know, if the majority of the planning commission all lived in the same neighborhood and maybe there was a property there. But typically that's not, I mean, typically it's a financial interest that really red flags someone with a conflict of interest. Um, and so typically you don't have such intertwined business interests as a planning commission that would jeopardize a majority of the quorum. I just haven't seen, I really haven't seen that yet. I, I see that where, where I see that sometimes is where people who I think don't really have a conflict of interest, they have what I would consider an uncomfortable situation. You know, a neighbor they see at the grocery store all the time has a property issue and they don't want to turn that person's variance down or turn down a, you know, a site plan or, or whatever. And it makes them uncomfortable, but that's not a real true conflict. So that would be one of those things where if it looked like what the, what your ordinance says is that, you know, if I, if I said, well, I don't think I should vote because I see her at the grocery store all the time and it makes me uncomfortable. That's where you, as a planning commission, decide that whether that's a real valid conflict of interest. And if you don't think that it is, then I have to vote.
Our former chairman did that quite, did that from time to time. He would disclose where he had client relationships and this committee would, or this commission would, would say that, not a problem.
And the committee or the commission knows my two matters. The what do you think? What do you think the purpose of rules of conduct are?
What I think purposes of rules of conduct are, they're to guide behavior.
What specific behaviors?
Well, yours, um, are behaviors of ex parte communication, member disclosure, and elaboration on conflict of interest.
So ours do two things, conflicts of interest of a defined kind and Open Meeting Act violations?
Well, I don't think it directly, it's the, regardless of what you do in your conduct policy, the, the Open Means Act is going to govern. So what I think this, the intent of this is to do is to sort of protect yourself from unintentional violations. Similarly, often I have clients that enact a electronic communications email policy and not because you need direction on how to email, but just to have a policy in place to prevent like reply to all and those types of things. So it's sort of an insurance policy to protect against open means that violation. This, this isn't going to trump the Open Means Act, you know, or.
No, but this goes beyond what the Open Meetings Act would require.
Yes.
So if we have guidance on ex parte communication, so the Open Meetings Act, and we have conflict of interest guidance through the ordinance, I ask again, like what do we need a rule of conduct given that we're?
Well, the two, two things here, there's nothing in here that I think your kind, your member disclosure is already in your ordinance. It's worded slightly differently, but even if yours was worded in a way that conflicted with the ordinance, the ordinance would govern. The ex parte communication, I think, is something that, that's a policy decision for this board. It doesn't, it's not required by law and it's not required by the Open Means Act. But if this is something that you think is important for this body to do or not to do, actually, they, then that's going to be something that that you can put in place. The, the, the question I have is, there's no, what's the teeth to it? I mean, what happens if someone does it? There's nothing in here that really directs that. You know, you can't, you know, you know, trump, trump whatever regulations are in the statute too. So it, it seems to me it's a, it's a policy that you're putting in place to protect yourself from the appearance of impropriety, possibly the accidental, you know, deliberations that would happen outside of a, of a public meeting. That's just what it seems to me. But again, you.
But is it redundant?
The, I think the member disclosure part is.
Steve, you know what an interested neighbor is?
In the past, uh, you know, planning commissioners have found it beneficial when you are contacted by somebody and, you know, you can politely say, look at, you know, you've got to come to the, to the meeting. We've got, you know, rules that we have to abide by. So, I mean, in the past, planning commissioners have actually found that to be helpful. Cause I think a lot of what we deal with, and I don't know if you would agree, it's, it's the, it's the appearance, right?
Yep.
It's when one of you says out in the public saying, yeah, you know, Ben and I were talking about that last week and, you know, it sounds bad or, or, you know, I got an email from, from Ralph about this site too. And so sometimes it's just, it's that appearance. So in the past, a lot of them have found that to be helpful, to be able to politely tell their friends and neighbors, you know, just come to the meeting, you know, that's where we get to talk about it.
I, I would agree with that.
But that assumes that that benefit is not outweighed by the harm in creating a very passive planning commission for a number of years in the past, a planning commission where the chairman hadn't ever responded to a planning commission member. The, via email, and we use the BCC technique that Mike suggested, um, to several of us.
Should we have Cascade Township email? In your opinion, would that help this? Is that a reason why? Yeah, I, I think a FOIA request and, and other things that are, are emailed, since we're sending it from our personal.
Well, two things with that. It's, it's a record retention problem if you don't. And then you have a situation where if you send it to your Gmail account, now you've got all your personal stuff mixed in with township.
That's what I was going to say. I think it's a personal.
Oh, no, I, I concur. So I want to make, I want to make sure I hear what you're saying. You're, we should, and you're, I don't want to put it in Gmail. Is it your recommendation?
I do a lot of speaking on FOIA and, and it's, um, I also think there's, um, what you have to worry about is text and email.
So is it your recommendation that this township provide township email addresses to its planning commission?
Yes.
We had already requested that, hadn't we?
We have, but I'm just trying to.
No, but again, we haven't gotten results that way.
I've been told that it's under review. I, I, I don't know, Director Peterson, if that's accurate or, that was my understanding. I don't know if you have any further context.
Uh, I reported that to Ben as well, and so I have not heard anything more on that. It was my understanding that there may have been a couple of board members who didn't want to do that. And so.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman, if you would like.
Yeah, that would be great.
Manager Swayze explained to me that we have a decision coming up, possibly related to the server discussion having to do with whether or not we're going to stay analog or, or move to the cloud. And there was quite a cost difference between the two email addresses. So he was working with the, um, with Brian Wilson, who does our internet services for us, to try to determine which route we were going to go before all of those new addresses were issued. So it's my understanding we're moving forward. We're just trying to get this decision made so that we can issue the new addresses in the appropriate format that we're going to be using going forward.
Okay. So to your knowledge, there's no, I want to make sure I call this, there's no board members that have said, no.
I wouldn't be able to speak to what any individual board member would have told Manager Swayze.
And, but to your knowledge, you're not aware of.
To my knowledge, no.
And, and, and member, or, uh, Trustee Nord, are you familiar or aware of any board members who would? Okay. I, I just want to call that before it gets out to the board members. That doesn't sound like that's the case. So it is Assistant Manager Fast, to your recollect, to your knowledge, that this is moving forward. That's, she, she did say it was moving forward. It's just.
No, it's moving. But this is the question. It should be on our open items list again.
Yep.
And Assistant Manager Fest, do you have a timetable for any of those decisions?
I do not currently, Member Merlin.
So it is where ideas go to die.
Assistant Manager Fest, thank you. I guess Director Peterson, if you can maybe ask for a timeline from Andrew Swayze. Or I can ask the chairman to do that directly, but it's something. Yeah, it, it's something that worries me. I don't like the personal.
Neither.
So, uh, and thank you. And I'm sorry to make that, but I, I want to make sure that it's on the record so that if it does get in front of the board because of a cost difference in going to the cloud, I, I want to make sure that that recommendation is documented. Member Merlin.
So what I think I hear you saying is that our current rules of conduct take a very risk averse position with regard to appearances of impropriety. And in essence, put us on practically taking very little, if any, legal risk. Now, on the tolerance of potential conflicts of interest or the appearance of impropriety, that gets more to the disclosure issue. You're correct that disclosure only works if people are honest enough to disclose. Or if they recognize it, and this is actually a fair point, in the securities world, there's a much broader view of, or in the corporate world, of potential conflicts of interest, I think, than under municipal law. The in your view to be within the law, we would not you would think our current rules of conduct to take a very intolerant view of potential conflicts or appearances of impropriety again. So we are hard legally averse.
I, I don't, I, I, I don't really know how to answer that question because you already have conflict of interest rules in the zoning ordinance. Your rules of conduct seem to be just more detail about that. But I don't think there's anything in the rules of conduct except for the ex parte communication that really is that different philosophically from the rules of conduct. I think you get a little bit more into the potential conflict of interest and more detail about you shouldn't be sitting in the room and making comments. Those are all, I guess, more detail on the same fundamental conflict of interest that's already in the ordinance.
There does in fact seem to be at least a couple of instances of inconsistencies actually in the current rules of conduct. I would propose, because if a member abstains due to conflict or potential conflict, the member has a right to voice his, her, per opinion at a meeting or hearing of the planning commission as a member of the audience. And should be treated as an interested party and should be bound by the requirements of section one. Well, let's get to the question actually of the more obvious one, which is site visits. Individual members shall view sites only if they can do so without any unnecessary contact with applicants, developers, represented, their representatives, or interested neighbors, whoever those may be, and with a specific purpose of gathering facts and/or data. And yet we have been told repeatedly that we should go be going out and doing site visits. Should we do site visits? Director Peterson?
I think it's helpful if you do site visits.
What would you view as, do we have to go there at some particular point in time that we could be sure that none of these other people are there? What is unnecessary contact? I mean, if we're just walking around Round Hill, for example, and Mr. Rhodey comes up, he probably is an interested neighbor. I would suggest.
I would agree.
And if Mr. Juisty comes up, he is an, he is a developer. Whichever side we come at it, one of the two of them is likely to show up. Probably Mr. Juisty less so. But his foreman might who asked us what we're doing before we got our badges. Which I appreciate our badges. How do we protect ourselves from unnecessary conduct? If we start in on a site visit, see Mr. Juisty, should we evacuate the premises?
I don't think you need to. I think you can tell him why you're there. And again, I think you would tell him or, or a neighbor say, yep, I'm here to, you know, check out the site. I know there's a public hearing coming up, but, you know, I really, I really don't want to talk to you, you know, just come to the meeting. Uh, I think that is exactly how, you know, others have done it in the past and, and how it would be, um, be handled the best so there wouldn't be any even perception. I suppose if you had, you know, something, you, you had the plan in front of you, you couldn't figure something out and said, could you show me where that catch basin 106 is? I, I mean, I suppose, um, but you know, my suggestion would be you would limit that as most, as much as you can. So there would never be any appearance of any impropriety either from, um, you know, him, the, the person you're talking to, or the way that it might get repeated publicly at a meeting. So I don't think there's a specific time you need to be there. I don't think you have to run away if you see one of those. You tell them why you're there and, and what you're doing.
Now, next question for council though is Mr. Rhodey, who sued the city on a writ of mandamus to get this, or the township on a writ of mandamus to get it to enforce its own ordinance, with regard to Round Hill. That litigation is settled. He no longer has any matter before this planning commission. Are we not supposed to talk to an interested neighbor who may call me up and say, look, I've got silt and sediment coming into the bayou next to my property? And it seems to be, and he's right across the street from that south retaining wall. So he's, and he goes up there and looks and says water's coming through the wall. So he says, I forward that on to you, Steve. That complaint or the two pictures that he sent.
Well, so that, that that seems like an administrative issue rather than a policy issue. You guys are the policymakers and you're the decision makers. If someone's, you know, I think what you want to do is make sure, it sounds like these are geared so that the appropriate person is dealing with the appropriate problem. You know, you go out to visit a site so that you can look, you know, it's, you look at these drawings and you can see, but sometimes when you go out there and you see the way the land is, it's a lot different than what's on these drawings. And that's important for your job in deciding these zoning matters. But if, if you open yourself up to be a complaint department for people, you're really taking the job away from the administration, which really should be handling those.
True, they really should. But again, in Cascade Township, there are at least a group of people who don't think the staff is responsive.
But that's a, that's a different issue. That's a different issue than ju- just because, I mean, there, there might be.
Well, I'm not going to put my credibility behind the staff if I. Well, I'm not going to put my credibility behind the staff if I don't think they're responsive.
But but what are you going to do personally?
I'm going to send it to Steve, and if Steve doesn't get a response out, I'm going to ask him why you didn't get a response out.
So you're going to send it to staff?
Yeah, I did.
I don't think it's our job as a middleman.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if I got that email, I would say, here's the email address, I can't really.
I think it makes a good point that you, you know, part of this is to say, is to give you guys some. Ability to say, this isn't my job.
But that's hiding behind a bureaucratic wall where you should be able to say. Look, we are here to make policy. We shouldn't need to have a bureaucratic excuse, we hear bureaucratic excuses at every meeting.
Right, but that person then should, you should then tell them to come here for open public comment and to speak to every one of us.
And they have been doing that. Repeatedly for the last four years. And they've got something that they roundly oppose be the number one priority on the twenty twenty one work plan. That's listening to the people. You have a staff and a board of trustees that have very differing views on Open Meeting Act compliance. Then certainly the planning commission has in its current rules. You have a fully divided board, three to three, with one person being sometimes hogtied in the middle. And sometimes going one way or the other. That's the problem we have in Cascade. The own, and we have data from our citizens that's four years old and pre pandemic, at least. And when they come to us, their finger is on, in my past experience. Because I've been lied to by members of the staff when I was a citizen here. As to purely factual questions.
Well, I I I mean, getting, getting back to the big picture here. It's what you guys want to do as far as your your policy. I think we've heard arguments on both sides, why you would or would not want. You know, personal interaction, you know, that, wh- when you're talking about transparency. There's in in increasing transparency, I think having access to individual plan commissioners by the public. Seems like a little bit like that's not transparent. Because they're having private conversations maybe with all of you, that if the policy is come here, every, let's have everybody hear what you're saying. Everybody can hear what you're saying.
And in the instance where that individual, who has been a friend of mine for thirty years, said. Look at, he just sent me two pictures. I sent them along to Steve, and at the next meeting of this commission. I asked Steve about them and mentioned that they had been the subject of a complaint by that person. Totally open, totally transparent. I don't, I agree with you, I don't think we should have behind the scenes deals or under the table deals. But I also don't know why we couldn't get P F O S remediation more quickly. And I also don't know why we couldn't, we ended up. And I could cite the litany of times, I got into looking at local government because I thought it had to be better than national government. And I wanted to see how the people reacted with their representatives in close proximity. Municipal government and its representatives, or the people and their representatives at the local level. Every meeting I went to was an argument. And I didn't even have a fish in the game on most of those. But it was a lack of trust.
But you are one member, and I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about all of you, are one member of a planning commission, okay? So if people feel like they can go to you and you're telling them one thing.
I'm not telling them anything.
Well, then what's the, what's the problem with not having the? What's the, I guess then I'm going to throw this back on you, then what's the concern about having that prevention of ex parte conflict? If you're passing along information and not telling them anything.
Oh, I don't think there is a problem, I think we should be listening to the citizens around the neighborhood. Where projects are to hear what their views are if they want to raise them, I will tell them to raise them in a public meeting. But if they say, for example, that we are held to a strict three minute limit. Or we're held to, I don't like to get up in front of a hundred people. I feel very terrified to get up in front of a hundred people.
So can we address these one by one, I feel like we have extended the three minute rule.
Beyond, but I'm not subject to the three.
No, 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 in in general, like I I I feel like, I I like, I I hear you, and I love this, I think you know that. What would I, I I don't want to be redundant with with some things that I think we have effectively changed, I think Wendy brought the. Disclosure of conflict of interest and we've done it, and I think it's awesome. I think we've extended not only the three minute rule, but I also think we've said, hey, even if there's not a public hearing and you want to talk about it, come in. I can think last week when we we had somebody come up and and to the one that you recused yourself from, where I said. Hey, like, we we, you're going to come back with a change, we're going to, we're going to open up the public, yeah.
Because they, yeah.
Yeah.
You're hearing what people were saying.
And so those have got our open meeting, or I mean, our open items list, absolutely.
So like, we are affecting change, so what, what? What, 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 you know, I I don't want to just keep going back, what, what would you like to? What is your proposal to to see change, or what would you like to ask the attorney that we could change, I guess is maybe my question, Craig, like, we're.
Not what it could, I want.
Or what should we change?
I want the answers, and I have listed in my most recent memo of July nineteen.
Yep.
Which is up on Google Docs.
Yep.
If anybody can get to it, I can't get to it.
I can send comments even.
Um, my daughter taught me how to use it last week or two weeks ago, so forgive that. For example, if. There are, do you view, and you obviously don't think do, you transparency as a positive in and of itself?
What, what legal implication does that have to?
I don't understand, I guess I don't understand the question, I don't.
Do you think transparency is a positive of its own? Rather than a necessity because of the O M A, or?
Look, I, it's not my job. I mean, I I tell you what the O M A, the O M A is pro transparency, but.
Excuse me?
The O M A and the FOIA are pro transparency sunshine laws.
They are, that's the spirit of both.
So what's, like, let me give you an example, I would tell you, if I wrote you an attorney client privilege communication. I would tell you to keep that subject to attorney client privilege, you might have a board that says, no, we think that the. Public, we want to be fully transparent, the public should be, see everything, so I, I think the question. I I don't really feel comfortable answering the question because. I don't know that I'm, I I can paint a broad brush and be pro transparency, anti transparency, I I, my job is to protect the client. And to to guide you through those.
Well, okay, and when you protect the client, are you protecting the client from legal liability, or are you protecting the client? In a way that has Cascade governed effectively and efficiently?
I mean, I hope that the answer would be both.
Can we go to your specific, like, the example, all right, we we have a homeowner that we're talking to in a neighborhood. It's just, I don't feel comfortable in getting up in front of a hundred people, I believe that was an example that you gave, what is your guidance to us in that situation?
They can submit written, they have them submit a written email, they can, you can read, you can actually read aloud. They can have someone else read aloud from their email, they can stand here, they can sit here, they can hear everything. They can have someone read their comment aloud, you can read their comments aloud, you can take it into advisory without having to even read it.
Okay, and would you also then say that we have no duty to respond to it ever?
Public comment is public comment, it's not question and answer, I don't think there's any.
So there's no dialogue.
There's no legal obligation for dialogue.
I'm not suggesting, again, this is where I get to the practical side, I know Mike is of the same view you are. That you have no legal obligation to engage in a dialogue with a member of the citizens of Cascade. But. If you're going to have a hundred people at a meeting and ninety of them are yelling at you, I would think you would want. To have. A bit of a dialogue with your members, with your constituency.
Well, my hell, play devil's advocate, if you've got that many people and you start arguing with each one of them, your meeting is going to be six hours, eight hours, a hundred hours. That's why the three minute limit is there, I mean, it's, look, you guys, you, this is your meeting, you run the meeting. If you want to have conversations with people that come up to public comment, you're absolutely, that's a policy decision, I'm not a policymaker for you. For for this public body, that's your decision.
What I was looking for originally was. A set of rules of conduct that you would view as. Typical for well-run municipalities. Townships, in particular, since we know their rules are different than cities and the like. Do you? Think, and included in that would be the question of. Do you think in most townships? Generically, this is a should question, this is not a legal opinion, this is a judgment that you contribute. To this commission's consideration of the issue. Because what we're asking you to is apply law to facts. And come up with a judgment as to what would be a good set of rules of conduct. Consistent with what you would find in general in traditionally well-run communities. And might have some sensitivity to the situation as it exists today in Cascade. And. That goes to exactly the question that was on the table a week ago at the Board of Trustees meetings. Where they fought tooth and nail, several of them did, to stop a cross-functional team. To actually conduct. And require a survey that was. Open and a process of following up, going into assisted living facilities. And making sure we heard from those people who were immobile or not bicyclists. The lower, no, I won't go into that digression, that's just a rabbit hole, um. But. If we think there is a suspicion or, you know, I've done due diligence for forty years. Doing securities offerings all over the world, when my red flags go up, or my ears just start to tingle. Do we have a, do I have a duty to ask further questions? Do I have any duties as a member of the planning commission?
Yeah.
What are they?
Well, they have their statutory obligations to make decisions.
According to what standards? I could, do I have a duty of loyalty?
But you have a, you have a, the standards are all set out in the, in the zoning ordinance, there, you have to review zoning decisions by what's in the zoning ordinance. I think, I think we're getting a little bit.
We're not making progress, that's correct.
Well, here, do you want, do you want us to come up with a set of rules that you think we think are reasonable, or do you guys want to? Because what what I think is reasonable might be different than what you think is reasonable, these are, these are all. They're not legal issues, I can tell you what the legal issues are, these are all additional things that you're. You know, the ex parte communication and the site visits, that's not a legal issue, that's a policy issue.
And I think my own view on that policy issue is that we should be more open to getting factual input from as many sources as we can. Before decisions are made, not being pushed into deliberating them, but we should be. If we have a factual issue, for example, on the Rhodey property, he's a professional engineer. He knows.
I I think, I think we, I I I don't mean to, I I do mean to stop you, I I think we all concur. That, I I I don't want to speak for everyone, does anybody? Like, I think we want to drive towards what we consider to be more transparency, which means that we can engage. Interested parties to gather information. So, does anybody disagree with what I just said there?
I don't.
Like, we want.
I get what you're saying, but I think it needs to be in a public format, I don't think it's fair for me to go gather information personally.
Well, I think if you're on a property and one of the property owners comes out, I think we want to be able to ask some questions, or if somebody approaches you, we want to be able to listen to them, maybe perhaps not.
Right. I agree.
Hey, I'm really upset about this, oh, okay, I'd like to hear about it, thank you for telling me.
And I've always been taught, just in this public format, that we are not supposed to be doing that. Because no matter what bias, I've learned a lot about unknown bias within our brains.
Yep.
That you might bring that to us with any bias that you present to us. Transforming those comments, questions, adding your own information to it when you present it to us. That I have always been told that that is not how they need to bring information to public comment. Or for us as a planning commission, that we all need to hear the exact same, we all need to digest it the same. And understand it and ask questions together if we need to, to understand the topic together. I don't think it's fair to individually talk to somebody, gather information and bring it back to us without us. We'd have no idea what biases coming to us.
Member Merlin.
No, I defer to Member Moxley.
Yeah, I'm sorry, nevermind.
Well, I've actually been in that position with Juisty. You know, I've gone out there to explore, and of course, he spots me, boom, he's right out there, he's in my face talking to me. And I I just say, I I really don't want to talk to you about this, you know, I just want to look around and get my own impression of what's going on here. And I want your opinion, I want your questions, I have no questions for you, been there, done that, and I just.
And that's how I, that's what I, that's my understanding.
But I guess my response to that is, then we've got to provide a means for citizens to talk with us. Not put thirty second or thirty three minute statements together, which can't, or aren't necessarily responded to. And no dialogue occurs.
Well, and I think that we have. The couple of public larger meetings we've had where people have come for public comment. I know, I took specific questions they asked and asked the party involved the questions public were asking, I think that that is part of our responsibility.
Right, but then does that person have to?
They don't want to come here, there's email, there's, you can request something be brought into public comment and be read on your behalf. If that's what you choose to do.
But that does not engage a dialogue with the citizens. That would say that we should never, on this survey that was going to be done, that we should never go into an assisted living facility. And ask what their concerns are, or what their priorities are.
To be disrespectful in any way, but I think you're jumping, you're taking what we're talking about, now we're jumping to assisted living facilities.
But let's just ask the question.
But the planning commission's not dealing with the survey, that's the board of trustees.
No, but if we decide to assist the board of trustees, that's not the trustees, by the way. Because that was in January changed to a township plan, not a board plan. The board has forgotten that, but that's what in fact happened. Now, having put that issue aside, if we assist in any way. The board in its going out and marketing the survey, because we want to hear from the citizens.
Then that's a, that's a completely different, that's not part of the planning commission, that would be that, no, hang on, let me.
Yeah, I would.
Let me finish.
I am.
That then is what you had discussed, bringing a proposal to making a different committee or whatever it was called. That involved three or four members of this commission, three or four members of the board, people from the public to discuss. Public comment to discuss everything to do with the general plan, that is not, that's completely separate than what we're talking about. Sitting here as a planning commission.
Well, I I would like to to give her guidance on what we're asking for, I think we are asking her to write. Rules of conduct, and I'll just start with that. Do we want to perhaps have her formulate a first draft and iterate on it, because I feel like we're, we're going. Because I feel like we're, we're going.
Now, Wendy, you would, you would prefer rules than principles?
Either, either way. I, I am a rules person. I am. But I also do the right thing. I feel like an ear on the side, mostly of caution, other than certain.
But that's one of those continuums.
I, I know, but I, again.
Are, are we, yeah, does anybody else, I think, does anybody else have a perspective?
I have stood in the rap. I thought we were asking for feedback on what our current rules of conduct were. I feel like we got that feedback, that they were, there was nothing wrong with those, the interpretation of those rules. The only thing I heard was that perhaps we had one piece in there that went further than was necessary. So I, I don't agree that we're asking for a rewrite of our rules. I think what we heard is that our rules are sufficient.
And, and I think that we also heard, I don't want, this may be the wrong word, we can police each other. But if we feel like somebody is violating those rules or there is something going on, we need to speak up at a meeting to have it brought forward and talked about. I think that was another thing discussed. Whereas maybe in the past, that didn't happen.
Okay, member Nordhook and member Moxley, do you have a perspective on this? And then, would you like to see rules or do you feel that you have clarity?
I guess I would prefer the rules and have our attorney draft a copy. You know, I think they're gonna be pretty close to what we're seeing here already, just tweaking them. That's, that's all I see.
Would the two of you be opposed to having her tweak the rules that we have to? I think something Craig said that I did like was driving towards more efficient. You know, just a more efficient way of operating, right? But I don't feel efficiency tonight, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to efficiency. And I appreciate the time you've put into this because there are questions that we, we hadn't thought through.
But I think what we have, what at least I've heard tonight is that the rules that will be drafted will be less risk averse than the rules we currently have because we want to push a little bit more toward the transparency side. Keep taking small steps in that direction.
Does anybody disagree with that? Could you please draft?
Well, here, so here's my, here's my problem with what I'm hearing.
Yes.
I'm not really sure, we, do you want me to keep the site visits as, I mean, the, do you want me to keep, this is the, do you want me to keep the prohibition against the site visits and talking with people? Or do you want to be able to talk to people? That's, I haven't really.
I, I think that, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think that I would like to hear your legal opinion or recommendation, whether, if, if we, if the recommendation is that it appears to be to violate some Open Meeting Act because we are having individual conversations and getting that, then, then that's how it should be. But if you think that it's fine that we do talk to people individually and my interpretation of what I've been told is incorrect, then you can put that in there and say it's fine for us to go talk to individuals.
If you could be prescriptive, that would be helpful too.
I'm sorry.
If you do feel that we can talk to people, if you could be prescriptive about what we can and cannot say, if that is your opinion that we should, we can talk to people, that would be helpful.
I mean, guidelines and.
Yes.
Rules. Well.
Engagement. Yes.
See, I would say interpretive guidelines in some places.
That's fine. I mean, if it's technical, we can ask technical questions, but we can't ask questions that relate to the, you know, the, I mean, like, that, that would, Steve gave a great example a couple of hours ago about looking at specifically.
Exactly, is this wall gonna be?
Yes, like, that would be helpful. For me, I, I, I'm not as good at interpreting plans and then looking out at it, right? It would be helpful to be able to ask that. Member Moxley?
I definitely think we should have site visits. To me, as a planning commissioner, that's an essential piece of doing your homework before you show up at these meetings. You gotta go see it. A lot of times I take the iPad and get, get photos of it.
Yeah, I, I don't think she's saying not to have them, right? I think you were saying to talk when you do go out to them. Communication on the site plans.
Yeah, I, I, it sounds like everybody here, staff and planning commissioners see the value in the site visits.
Yes.
The rules of engagement when you are on the site, I think is the issue.
And I think the other thing that I would like to see as part of that is a softening of the rules on ex parte communication.
Do we have a, all right, do, do we all agree on that before that's every question?
I, I think there needs to be some sort of rule word, but I, I agree with the whole email thing, like blind copying, people getting that, I get. But I also know it is kind of frustrating, which Steve had brought this up, but in a different term, where we have sat down here just a week ago and I know you and, um, yes, we're talking, no, Scott, we're referring to you being late because you two had been talking on the phone or something to that effect. That is hard, like, to me, that is like, okay, what did I miss? Like, what, and then we started talking about stuff, your questions, and you two had discussed that, which I get it. He is the chairman, he needs to know what you're bringing here. But as a member, I felt left out, like, okay, I have no idea what you're talking about. And it was on public meeting to know that you two did have conversations that made you late for a meeting. So I think I, I agree that we do need to be able to communicate in some ways, like, oh, you're gonna be absent, you're gonna be absent, you're gonna be absent. Hey, I'm gonna send a blind copy to people to find out who's gonna show up to the next meeting to see if we need to have it or we need to move it to a different time, you know, certain pieces. But I feel like there's other things that we shouldn't be discussing until we're in front of people.
Member, member Nord.
I don't think we should be isolated planning boards either.
No, I agree, and that's what I'm saying. I think we do need to, and being new, I think that I, I should have the ability to talk to the chairman to say, hey, or somebody to say, hey, can you give me some history on this? Like, what happened in the previous with this? What's going on? I think that that should be allowed, you know? Other words, you're gonna continue when you turn over people to have no idea what has happened in the past unless you can communicate.
I, I would also option Steve and Brian, like, you know, I'm not saying, we, we have to communicate with each other as well on, on these things, but Steve hears from me quite often, uh, just for questions on various technical things, right? And.
And what I take it, Wendy, is that you would say if the commission asks me to do a template of questions, I shouldn't do it?
No, you're taking what I'm saying and turning it around into your interpretation of it, and that's not fair. That is nowhere near what, I don't think anybody else thought that's what I said. That's not what I said.
Would you say then?
I think she is saying that she had the perception of being left out without having all the context of what we were covering.
I had no idea.
You were talking about questions.
Right.
And so, um, I don't want to speak for you, but I think.
I just thought that since I had been commissioned to do that, I should tell Scott what I was bringing, and he asked me what I was bringing to the table.
And you didn't hear me disclose that thing. I understood, stand that you were asked to do something and it was obvious you're talking about that, but I think then it should have been brought, we had this conversation and this is what, just to.
That's 100% fair, like, we, it, it was the three of us. He provided the questions, we provided comments to try and narrow it down. We should accept.
Right, I mean, that's all it would have taken when, when we started with the topic part on the agenda. That's all it would have taken and everybody would have understood that's what the conversation was.
So, all right, I think that, that, that's what we're looking for. Um, I, I do think it's softening. Does everybody agree with that? Like, yes, the ex parte communications. Uh, but guidelines are gonna be critical and again, we can iterate on this, let's just get a draft going. Uh, and, and, you know, Brian, if we can, if she gets that to you before the August 2nd meeting, if you can send it out to the group, send it to Chairman Rissy first for review and then, uh, you know, he can, he can send out or he can have you send out.
And put it on the, in the packet ultimately.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, all right, uh, before we, does anybody else have anything else on this? Some quick logistics, our next meeting is on August 2nd. Brian, do we know what's coming up on that meeting so far?
Well, the site plan review, special use permits. And then we'll see when time or the app I can give today gives me maintenance screening and things like that, so that could potentially be on there, but.
All right, so we'll see Tommy's, he said we have a site.
Site plan review at Thornapple Golf Club, special use permit for an accessory building. And then maybe the Tommy's.
It seems about the time of year that we see that from them. All right, Tommy's, and then, uh, have we heard anything further, uh, from Gusty on his proposed pool?
Not that I'm aware of, I, I don't believe so.
All right, nor do we know whether he started it in the part of the property that he could have put it on.
I, I, I'm just asking if there's something coming, so, all right. Cool, I will hear a motion for adjournment if anyone's so interested.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Member Moxley moves to adjourn it. Do I have a second? Have a support for member Rapid, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. A great meeting, folks, thank you.